Is there a pastor in the audience that would like to lead us in prayer tonight? Do we have any pastors?
No, no.
No? No pastors? Would you like to lead us in prayer tonight?
Well, we're not starting yet, but just come up front, sir.
Yeah, if you want to sit in the front, we can let you know when. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. Please turn your cell phones to vibrate, silence are offsetting. The Board of County Commissioners allows any person to speak regarding an item on the agenda. The speaker is limited to three minutes unless otherwise determined by the chairperson to allow sufficient time for all speakers. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, disruptive aliments, protest, or other conduct which interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Upon completion of the public comment period, discussion by board members and questions raised by the board. This is our first budget public hearing, September 9th, 2025. Steve, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Please stand, everyone.
Yeah, please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Religious Things, One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sir, we should have had you first, but come on to the invocation. And please state your name, where are you from?
Dr. Eric Utrus. Pastor Friend Baptist Church here in the city.
Thank you.
Shall we pray? Eternal Father God, as we come before you today with this business at hand, we pray that you would lead us and guide us in the ways that is right and in your sight. Keep our hearts and our minds steadfast on you and for the things that you would have us to do. Bless us all and keep us. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right, Delana, do we have a proof of publication?
Mr. Chairman, the 5:01 PM first public hearing for consideration of the tentative budget for fiscal year 25, 2026 was advertised in the board's weekly meeting schedule in the Pensacola News Journal on September 4th, 2025. As required by Florida Statute 197 dot 363, the 5:02 PM public hearing for consideration of adopting the fiscal year 2025, 2026 fire protection MSBU and first-year assessment roles for street lighting, holding pond maintenance, perky-beach mouse, and nuisance abatement MSBUs was advertised in the Pensacola News Journal on August 15th, 2025. First-class notices were mailed to all property owners in the affected MSBU districts. A notice of street lighting MSBU adjustment was also published in the Pensacola News Journal on August 15th, 2025.
Okay, thank you very much. Board, this isn't in the agenda, but is there any commissioner comments before we adopt the agenda?
Uh, no, sir. In light of the folks here, I'd get right into it.
Yeah, okay. All right. Commissioner May?
No.
All right. You have one else? Good, okay, thank you. Okay, since that's Eric, do we have an adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Please vote. Motion passes five to zero. Board, we're a board action item, 5:01, public hearing for the consideration of the tentative budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Assistant County Administrator Ms. Bowers, would you like to lead us from here?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is the first of two required public hearings for the board to adopt the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget. The board later in the meeting will set the second public hearing. The Escambia County Board of County Commissioners approved the 2025, 2026 tentative millage rates for trim notification purposes at the BCC meeting held on July 10th, 2025. The law requires that prior to consideration of the tentative budget, an explanation of the rolled-back rate be provided and entered into the records. The rolled-back rate is a computed millage rate that would generate the same amount of ad valorem tax dollars as the prior fiscal year, based on the proposed year's tax roll, excluding new construction. The millage rates tentatively adopted by the board for trim notifications are 6.6165 for the countywide millage rate, 0.3590 for the library municipal services taxing unit, and 0.6850 for the sheriff's law enforcement municipal services taxing unit. The aggregate of these millage rates proposed for fiscal year 2025, 2026 is 4.83% above the rolled-back rate of 7.1312 certified by the property appraiser. This represents the percentage increase in property taxes tentatively adopted by the board. For information and to avoid any misunderstanding concerning the process of this meeting, this public hearing is convened tonight to discuss the county's fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget. Because of time constraints, we will need to confine our discussion to this subject. Increases in property assessments, remarks, or questions concerning individual property appraisals should be addressed to the county property appraiser at his office during normal business hours. Thank you.
Thank you. County Administrator Bowers. Board, at this point, we're at, is there any questions or discussions on this item? I have to ask. If I see none, we'll move forward. We're at public forum. We have one speaker on the tentative budget for FY 25, 26 millage rates. That's Larry Downs Jr. Larry, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please come up.
Is this it? Okay. Larry Downs Jr., Plumbing LLC, because fecal midas. Figure I might as well use that as an opportunity to promote some business, since y'all are, you know, budgeting our business, which is quite expensive. Is there, I just wanted to let y'all know that we should never, ever go up on our taxes by double or more than double. That's unacceptable. So anytime you go up on any type of, you know, tax or budget or anything else, try to do it like in 10% increments, you know? Because 10% is good enough for our, you know, for tides. You know what I mean? I mean, it's good enough for our church, it's good enough for our religion, it should be good enough for our government. But if you go, if you go over the 10%, a lot of people can't afford that. And I don't know if y'all know it or not, but we are headed into a great recession, if not depression. You cannot spend $10 trillion over a two-year period of the plandemic money, the Corona Cares Act. The American Rescue Plan, which does exactly the opposite of what it says, American Rescue Plan, giving all that money to those huge global corporations, shutting down small businesses all over the country that'll never come back. Y'all need to keep that in mind whenever you are voting to put more burden on the taxpayer. So that's all I got to say, just, just, just try not to do it. Don't do it, and if you have to do it, don't raise our taxes over 10% at a time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Downs. Please, we're just getting started. Okay, board, we need action of the tentative millage resolution for fiscal year 25, 26. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt the tentative millage resolution as presented in the agenda backup of 6.615 mills for the countywide millage rate, 0.359 for the library MSTU, 0.65 mills for the sheriff law enforcement MSTU for fiscal year 25, 26.
All right, so Mike, we don't have public speakers before this?
That was the only one for this. We will have several for the MSBU.
Okay, I move the item.
Okay. Is there a second? All right, there's a motion and a second, please vote. Motion passes five to zero. Item 72 is the tentative budget resolution that the chair entertains for the totality of the budget resolution of $824,440,000, $824,440,150 as presented in the agenda backup. You have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion, a second, please vote. Okay, motion passes five to zero. Our third item, 73, is announcing the second public hearing for adoption of the fiscal year 25, 26 budget, which will be held September 23rd, 2025, in these chambers at 5:01 PM. Is there a motion to move that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, please vote. Second public hearing passes five to zero.
Mr. Chairman, is this one the outside agencies have been invited to present?
Actually, Stefan, you want to answer that question? Because you know that, I think you've reached out to all of them, and just if you could give the board a backup.
Commissioners, as a courtesy to the public that have shown up tonight to speak in regards to the fire MSBU or any other issues, we requested to move community partners to the second budget public hearing, which is also in line with the board's direction last year. And that, that communication was sent out and notified to our community partners.
Any further questions?
Excuse me, Commissioner?
Hey, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. We're going to have, we're going to have a discussion on MSBU. If you haven't signed up, please go outside and sign up, and you will appropriately be able to present the board right from that mic, but we're not going to have people shouting out, okay?
I've already done that.
Okay, then I will get to, that's okay. I know, we have a lot of people here tonight, but we got to make sure that we all listen to each other and be respectful. Okay. We're at, we're at item four, and this is the public hearing for consideration of adopting the fiscal year 2025, 26 non-ad valorem special assessment role. The board action of resolution to amend resolution R.2003-71 as amended by R.2025-63 revising the cost of services and unit assessments with no change in the proposed fire MSBU The chair will entertain a motion recommending that the, actually, hold on a second. Yeah, hold on. The chair will entertain a motion recommending that the board consider adopting a resolution to amend R.2003-71 as amended by R.2025-63, excuse me, y'all, to revise the cost of service and units of assessment used to calculate the adjusted rates with no change in the proposal for fire MSBU assessment rates.
All right, Mr. Chairman, so this is also not the item that we have the speakers here for? This is some housekeeping?
Yep.
I move, I move the item.
Second.
All right, there's a motion, a second, please vote. Motion passes five to zero. All right, Debbie, we're up to the presentation of the non-ad valorem tax.
Okay. Commissioners, there's a list of all the non-ad valorem districts and rates provided in your agenda backup.
Okay. Debbie, did you read three, too?
Oh.
Yeah, that's what I thought. You only read two, we need to read three as well.
All right. That the board adopt the fiscal year 2025, 2026 non-ad valorem assessment role for the county mainland fire protection municipal services benefit unit, MSBU, following the 5:02 PM public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're open to, due to public forum, we have several speakers for the MSBU. The first one, I don't know. Okay, there's a John M. There's probably multiple Johns in the audience. I'll give, if you're John M.
Mr. Chairman, how many speakers do we have on the item?
Probably 25.
Five.
25.
25, thank you.
Okay, John M., that's your last chance. Tim Myers, you're up, you're up. Okay, come on up, Tim, to the stadium. Mary Knopka, chief, you're on deck.
I've read this at home, it's about three and a half minutes.
You get three minutes, sir, but do the best you can.
Okay. All right, good evening, everyone. Let me preface this with, to say that I was a volunteer fireman in Virginia for four years and know the mechanics and operations involved. I'm a 30-year resident of Escambia County and have the highest respect for the fire department. I've been informed by the Escambia County Fire Chief, requested the Board of County Commissioners increase the fire department taxes by 80% above what we already pay from 125 to 226, calling it a non-ad valorem tax, when in actuality it is going to be paid with our ad valorem tax bill. Reality is, it is intended to be used to build new fire stations and don't service you, most of us. One fire station that's currently planned was nothing but a tin garage with one truck manned by 100% volunteers, and they want to rebuild it on Borough Road. It could be rebuilt for what it was, for less than $40,000 with the overages currently. That gave the residents an ISO rating, insurance rating of four vice 10, which is unimaginable. Notification notwithstanding as improperly noticed by a subscription-only news outlet. This is not coincidence that we had a 250-page budget that was put forward only 24 hours ago. This is well-known as old boy system here in Escambia County, and keeping information from citizens until it's too late. I do not have the simple request that I made when I signed up for this for overall general budget for the last four years, only that. This proposal is simply a Trojan unicorn shell game with our taxes. Here's an 800-pound gorilla in the room Escambia County Administration is trying to put lipstick on. Escambia County has received an increase in tax revenue of $50 million over the last year for a grand budget of $375 million. This 80% increase in department tax will generate an additional $10.7 million for the general tax base, which can be used for anything, but they claim it's going to go into the fire department MSBU. This is going to show up on your property and business taxes now and forever moving forward. The Escambia County fire budget is $29,850,000, of which $21 million is from the lost tax fund and $10 million from the Escambia County General Fund. Facts are, you should be paid, you should be expected to pay for your fire service that services your house or your business, not for others. This, and it's on the back of the ad valorem notice, it says only services, people that benefit from the services that are requested should be taxed. This fact makes a proposal dead on its face. If you live on a nine-mile road, in what fairness would a fire truck from Inter rarity point show up at your house? Never. They claim that the fire station costs $7 million. They got extra $50 million to deal with it. Two fire stations were built in the last couple of years. Where'd that money come from? There are no proposals for building costs for any new station by the law of Florida State Statute Chapter 12, 212 and 197 cannot mandate a tax be brought back.
Mr. Maj, can you wrap up your thoughts, please?
Unless someone has the plans and cost. So in closing, we should be, we should pay our taxes for services rendered to us, and Escambia County should be good stewards of our tax dollars, but we should also pay attention to who we vote in office.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Mary Knopka, come on. All right, Mary, you're up. Mary Knopka, you're up, and Angela Griggs is on deck.
Hi, Mary Knopka, Bellevue Small Engineering Repair. This county has a 7.5 sales tax, higher than a lot of counties in the state of Florida. So where's that money? Why isn't that money being managed a little bit better? Because builders build, leave, everything floods, and then the county has to pay for it. So those are our tax dollars. We don't like that. How about some impact fees for those developers? Because every building they build affects the sheriff, EMS, the fire department, animal control, on and on. Thank you. So I think impact fees would be a great thing. Also, in the Florida statutes, they talk about, a lot about tourist tax. Are we, are we looking into that? They talk about extra tax at motels and hotels on food, drinks, and beverages. Have we looked into that? They talk about, and this is for counties on the Gulf side of Florida, specifically states of Gulf side. Is anybody looking into that? Bars that sell food, extra tax, anybody looking into that? But don't take our money and decide, oh, we're going to do this. We support fire department, but don't wring it out of us like we have money or something. Look at the median income in this county, not what you get. You guys probably get two to three times the median income. You need to understand that there's people out here, as the gentleman pointed out, that we have things to, groceries going up, insurance going up, everything's going up, and then you want to tax us more. No. Look at what's happened, be responsible. I can't believe this county's broke with a 7.5% sales tax, and look into everything you can. I, I would be amenable to an 8% tax, but I read something online that said, oh, 7.5% is the highest a county can go. I don't know where that information came from. It was posted online, so I went back to Florida State statutes, and I didn't see anything that said that. So we might be amenable to a 0.5% increase, and don't split it with Pensacola. Do not split it with the city of Pensacola, okay?
All right, May, please wrap up your thoughts. Thank you for your comments.
I have a lot more to say.
Angela Griggs, is Angela Griggs out there? Angela Griggs, this is your last chance, Angela Griggs.
What is her name?
Angela Griggs.
Thank you.
Okay, Sharon Isler, I think is how it is, is Sharon Isler out there? Sharon Isler.
What?
E.I.S.S.L.E.R. Okay, I'll come back. James Canova, is James out there? All right, where are these people? All right. Kurt Burge. Kurt Burge, are you out there? Kurt, please come up, and Diane Bailey's on deck.
Thank you all for having me.
Thank you.
Hi. I don't have anything prepared to say, but I just, I think a tax increase of this amount, because I was breaking down the tax bill that, that we recently all got, and it seems like the county tax was about $250, and now it's almost like double that. So I went on site, online, to try to figure it out, and that's why I'm at this meeting, to try to figure out. I also think that for the amount of tax increase that you're looking at, it should be on a ballot rather than decided amongst 10 people. So, and that's, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Diane Bailey, is Diane out there? Diane Bailey. Okay, Diane. Joanne Gibson, is Joanne Gibson out there? And I don't know if someone's named these names. She's coming, she's here? Okay, thanks, Joanne. And Jennifer? Buttercavili, yeah, you're up next. Okay, go ahead, Jennifer. Or Joanne, I'm sorry.
Good evening. I was very upset when I received this letter. I am one of those that retired in here hoping to be in a quiet Pensacola city, not a city trying to be Miami or Cape Canaveral or Tampa. Our taxes are showing that that's what we want to be. We want to spend frivolous money to update Navy Boulevard between Brancis and the Bob's, in the bridge going to base. Yeah, could use some new stoplights, I mean, some new streetlights, but that's a million-point-dollar project. Why can't we deter that money and put it towards fire stations? We have neighborhoods that need speed bumps on their streets. I have a friend that almost got killed, her dog almost got killed, but nobody wants to put speed bumps, and we're worried about this tax for fire stations. Furthermore, the almost 50% increase is ridiculous. I agree with the first speaker, it should be limited, and that should be on the next ballot. We should limit how much it can go up in one year. Thank you.
All right. Jennifer, I don't know how to say this last name, B.U.T.T.A.C.O.V.I.L.I., okay?
Jennifer Buttercavili, I'm District 1.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Lisa Rogers, you're on deck.
So I didn't have anything really prepared, but the more I was reading, the more I kind of got annoyed that our taxes are going up this high. It's uncalled for because the thing that needs to get done safety-wise isn't getting done. As I understand, you know, fire department is safety, but there are other things. By the way, I'm the one that almost got hit by the car with the dog almost dying, that was me, and I dealt with Mr. Bishkov on that, you'll be hearing from me on another note. However, as, when I got this, this letter in the mail, I started looking up to see what fire departments were built in the last couple of years. I'm fairly new here, been here since 2016, also retired Navy. However, I couldn't find anything. I think I found two in the past five years. Now, you want to propose this to go to $34 million approximately, which will be more because that's, the assessment thing was per square foot. I have a small home, so it's not going to be as much as, say, someone with 2,500 square foot. Where's that money going to? Because last year, the minimum, I think, was like, I can't remember what the numbers are, was, it was a lot less, matter of fact, less than that. It was over 20 million, but nothing was done. So why should we double our taxes for you guys to do whatever you want with? Again, I'm trying to get speed bumps so I don't get killed mowing my grass. So give us a reason why we shouldn't be upset that we have to pay double taxes.
Thank you, ma'am. Lisa Rogers, is Lisa out there?
Hi.
Okay, hi, Lisa.
Hi.
And then Regina Russell, you're on deck.
Lisa Rogers, 6036 Sundance Circle. First, I want to say that I hold firefighters in great regard as I do law enforcement. They put their lives on the line to protect us, and they have dangerous jobs, and they protect our property and our lives here in Escambia County. I do have some concern about the large percentage increase in the MSMBU. I know that some believe it's not bad if it's only $101 per property with a home on it per, per year. However, when you add the rising cost of home maintenance, HOA fees, property insurance, automobile insurance, food, healthcare costs, and the proposed increase to the ad valorem taxes, it can be very hard for individuals and families on fixed incomes that are at or below the median income for our county. MSBUs do not allow for exemptions for low-income widows, disabled, or veterans like the ad valorem taxes do. What's wrong with funding the fire, the fire departments with the general fund dollars? Escambia County revenues rise every year. Theoretically, our rising revenues should be, keep pace with rising costs. I believe that Escambia County has over $800 million for the budget this year. In 2022, the Escambia budget was just over $240 million. In 2022, the Escambia budget was just over $240 million. That's almost a $600 million increase in three years. It's my understanding that 34 million in lost funds will be used to repair or build five fire stations and maybe a training facility. Then, over 34.6 million in the anticipated revenue for the proposed fire MSBU, that totals over $68.6 million for the fire department. Am I correct? If both are approved, what is the actual effective tax rate? Because we will have contributed to both taxes. Although the county has not raised the ad valorem tax millage rate, we have had tremendous growth with new subdivisions, townhomes, and apartments, and the property values have increased. This would seem to have count for the increase in the revenue. I, I do have some questions for y'all to consider. Have you considered the impact fees to consider for, for the building, for the builders to be able to pay for the new fire stations and schools and the new growth? The lost revenue, if we had had the impact fees, the lost revenue could have been used elsewhere for the residents of the county. I do believe that our firefighters need to be paid more, especially the ones that are coming up, but I do want the commissioners to consider rolling back the millage rate on the ad valorem taxes.
Ms. Rogers, please wrap up your thoughts.
Okay. It's time that we go ahead and put our needs before our wants.
Thank you very much. All right. Regina Russell? Regina, come on up. And then Gordon Morse, you're on deck. Read the name.
Good evening. I'm Regina Russell. I am relatively new here. I'm strongly against this tax. However, I strongly support our first responders and have done that in many ways beside the taxes. I think that the increase in tax needs to be a millage rate. Therefore, everyone pays according to their property value. It's not fair for a $200,000 house to pay the same as a $2 million house. I think it's important for us to know in general, this is a general statement that has been supported, that Florida has become an expensive place to live, with its cost of living significantly increasing in recent years and now exceeding the national rate. Why is this happening? Housing costs, the prices of housing, insurance premiums, and taxes, and the high utility taxes that we pay. I think, I agree with the previous person, that this should be on the ballot, that it is unfair to all of a sudden just increase taxes when so many people, as you know, are on fixed incomes, even though many people here who only have a small salary or a small amount of money would be very happy to open their pocket and pay a lower percentage. You've heard that over and over. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Gordon Morse? And then Jacob Rockwell, you're up after Mr. Morse.
Yeah, I'm going to echo what a lot of people said. My, the ad valorem tax was added before to each one of our real ti, our real estate tax bills. And now, every house should be receiving those already. But now you want to double, in my case, what my ad valorem taxes are going to be. And I think that's ridiculous, that you don't look down the road a little bit when you know that things are going to come up that you might need expanded, that you don't add a fee to the builders that are building all of this, because the building boom we have is why you're trying to collect more taxes off this non-ad valorem. And I think that is really wrong, because most of us out here, or a lot of us out here are not making 80, 90,000 a year like you are. We're living on fixed income, and with the cost of living going up like it is at 2%, 2.5% a month, that's like 24% to 30% a year, and now you're adding to it. It's like you're saying you don't care. We're going to tax them, and they got to pay for it. So I think with the ad valorem, the tax that you're adding up here, if you do the advance fees, you'd be better off, then you would have more than money to pay for it without trying to tax people ridiculously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morse. Jacob Rockwell? And William Pickard is on deck. Good evening, Jacob.
All right. In 2019 to 2020, the county budget was $493 million. The 2024 to 2025 budget is $799 million, a 61% increase. The Consumer Price Index lists the inflation over that period at 26.36%. That means Escambia County's budget has inflated almost 2.5 times that of the average rate of inflation. This further drives inflation, increases the cost of living unnecessarily. So why do you need another tax increase? There should be plenty of money. So WTF? The reason y'all have your hand out for another tax increase to pay the firefighters is because you used all the money on your unnecessary pet projects, such as $20 million for fake grass at the John R. Jones Sports Complex. If we don't have the money to pay for firefighters, we sure as hell don't have the funds to be buying $20 million in fake grass when the stuff grows out of the ground for free. Now, I know there's this money for this garbage over here, and that money for that boondoggle over there, but as a taxpayer, I don't care. Ad valorem, non-ad valorem, I do not care. It is all semantics to me. All I see is the big fat tax bill that keeps growing at an unconscionable rate year after year. And all, and y'all do this every time. You make darn sure your building projects and whatnots are paid for and flushed with cash first, I suspect, because you know you can emotionally blackmail the population for 20 million in AstroTurf. So you pay for that first, and then you come to us saying, you know, you don't, we don't have money for firefighters. We don't have money for meals for kids at school, or whatever else. You do this for maximum emotional blackmail. I couldn't have picked two better demographics outside of blind orphans to garner more emotional Now, 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 I'm here to tell you, this utter is dry. If y'all squeeze this cow anymore, it's going to kick the bucket over. The taxpayers of this state and county will vote to abolish the property tax altogether, and good luck paying for all your boondoggles then. So do your dang jobs and find the money in this already insanely overinflated budget. It is there. Now, Strogerber, I'm talking directly to you as one of your electors. We voted out Burgos for this very exact reason. He didn't see a tax raise he didn't like, or a real estate deal he didn't want to approve. This budget is 33.64% overinflated, so get it under control. We kicked him to the curb for stuff just like this.
Mr. Rockwell, please wrap up your thoughts. Thank you. Good job. Yeah. All right. Good job. All right. All right. All right. I, I know there's a lot of emotion here tonight, and that, that guy has some, some good funnies there, too. Mr. Pickard, you're up, and then Walter Buck, Sr.
Okay. Like everybody else, we weren't too happy when we got our tax bill. We think our property taxes were high enough, but then we also got the thing about the fire department tax, and it just seems a little extreme. I agree with another lady that said, you know, you should go by millage. That way, you pay something, you know, based on the value of your home. That's going to be it for me. I just wanted to voice my opinion.
Thank you for coming down and sharing your thoughts. Walter Buck, Sr. Walter Buck, and thank you, sir. And Harvey Carroll's on deck.
I've, I've been here since 1957. In '72, I went in the Army for 20 years and come back in '92. All right. I have fought for this country, and you guys need to understand that we are not that rich here. Okay? Now, I know it's all about the numbers, but in 1992, we voted in the 1% sale tax, and that was to support infrastructure. So we need to be using that. Okay? And it was voted again until 2027 or '28, when it's going to come up again for the Now, y'all want to raise the non-ad valorem by 80.9% for my dwelling. And then I have two 1-acre lots behind my house, and you're going to raise it 161%? That's ridiculous. Come on now. There's got to be something there to protect the citizens of Florida. And there is. It's Florida Statute 191, Section 009, Paragraph 2A. It pertains about how to increase non-ad valorem. Have y'all even looked into that, or are y'all going to exceed that amount? I'm trying to find it here where it says, and it says right here, "Non-ad valorem," and Subparagraph 2A, "Assessment rates set by the board may exceed maximum rates established by special act, county ordinance, the previous year's resolutions, or referendum in the average annual growth rate of Florida's personal income over the previous five years." Now, y'all think we need to go over that amount? I don't think so. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Buck. Harvey Carroll? Is Harvey Carroll out there? Okay, Har, all right, Mr. Carroll, come on up. And Michael Waldo's on deck.
My name's Harvey Carroll from District 3. I can't say a whole lot more than what they've already said besides the fact that I know I'm not the only person in this room that lives on Social Security disability. And this type of tax increase ought to be criminal, because I sure as hell can't afford it. I mean, for the first time in 18 years, my wife has to help me pay the bills. She's never had to do that. She's buying the groceries. She's never had to do that. This type of increase is ridiculous. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Mr. Waldo, are you out there? Mr. Waldo? And then Nick Thimaras is on deck. I think I'm saying that right.
Good afternoon. Tried to prepare something to make it timely. I'm here to speak about when I saw my tax assessment being proposed for the next year over the previous year, it included a tax assessment for the fire department that was nearly double the previous year. I believe that this group both proposes the potential increase, and then after a brief public hearing such as this meeting, the same group gets to vote and make their decision on their own proposal. On the face, that doesn't sound very good. Unfortunately, I can't think of a really good other process, although I do know what the other gentleman said about having it voted on. I'm of the opinion that Mayor Reeves is pursuing a path trying to grow Pensacola, and he's doing so at an agri, at an aggressive path. A side effect of that is that our need for public services, and in the short term especially, is outstripping the funding by taxpayers. Eventually, there may be more people to pay the taxes, but in the short run, we're being asked to give more. It's either give more or receive lesser services, and one of the highly visible services is emergency services, such as EMT and fire department. Many people have experienced personal observations and encounters with there currently being not enough EMT services. Back in 2023, my next-door neighbor had several critical care calls to EMT during that last year before he died. So I understand, I think I understand the justification intended behind the increase. And I'm not necessarily speaking in opposition to the increase, but a proposed doubling. I would be very reluctant to support that idea of an increase. I believe a doubling of the tax should become, should not be, then become the new permanent norm. Hopefully, as the base of taxpayers grows, the amount per taxpayer will reduce. My actual recommendation to this group is then when you actually vote on the tax assessment, that you include two more statements, not merely the assessment amount. One, include a statement acknowledging, recognizing that you are nearly doubling or whatever percentage, the increase. Make that part of your vote, that you acknowledge what you're doing. And secondly, include a statement that the increase is, will be reviewed each year, and that the tax assessment of 2024 will be the starting point in the future tax planning, not making this a permanent starting point. I believe it's imperative to actually include those two statements in your actual voting motion. When you propose and vote on your new assessment, merely saying or such or putting it elsewhere will not provide the public with assurance of what to expect next year. Doubling a tax assessment surely seems excessive. If any impressions were, if my impressions were somewhat correct, then show the public your attention to their concerns.
Mr. Waldo, please wrap up.
Then show the public your attention to these concerns and put it in writing as part of what you vote on.
Thank you for your comment, sir. Nick Thimaras? Is Nick out there? I got that right. Nick, T-H-I-M-A-R-A-S? Are you in the audience?
Yes.
Okay, come on up. And then Warren Sitzman is on deck.
My name is, my name is Nick Thimaras. I live at North Escambia County.
Sorry about that.
I've been living there like 50 years, and I'm in the same boat as the most of the people here. I'm retired on a fixed income, and I'd just like you to reconsider what you're doing here. That's all.
Thank you for your comment, sir. Warren Sitzman, come on up. And Linda Seaman, I think is the next, next citizen up.
Yes, sir.
Well, first, I'd like to say that I concur with what's been said so far, which pretty much took all the winds out of my, wind out of my sail, because the points that have been brought forward were excellent, and I think that they need to be considered, not just passed on as disgruntled individuals. But one thing I do have a question about is there's a lot of neighborhoods, mine included, that are gated communities, and so the roads are private, the streetlights are private, the drainage ponds are private. All this is paid for through the HOA. And so now you're saying, we're going to increase those fees and make people pay for services that they already paid for. To me, that just seems atrocious. And, you know, it's, I want to know how you would resolve that, because like I said, there are several gated communities, also the, the roads in our community are private property, and so you have no expenses with which to try to justify what you're asking for. And in closing, I would just like to suggest that probably you need to do exactly what the federal government did, create a DOGE team, because there's so much waste within this committee that you need independent auditing and independent eyes to look at what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, sir. Linda Seaman? Is Linda, is that you, ma'am? Okay, thank you. And then Faith Wiley, I think, is next.
Good evening, Linda Seaman.
Thank you, ma'am.
Now, first of all, I appreciate all of our municipal services, folks, and I want to continue to support them as they support all of us in Escambia County. I'm opposed to raising our taxes to pay for these services. I believe we need another way to fund our municipal services. Perhaps maybe a consumption tax would be fair to everyone using these services. Then everyone would be contributing to the service they, they receive instead of just the homeowners. I'm opposed to the fact that you can't, if you can't pay your taxes, your home is taken away from you.
Yes.
I agree with that.
That, that is, is not right. I, I am looking forward to the constitutional amendment on the 26th of November ballot to end property taxes in Florida. I need the peace of mind to know that I'm not going to lose my home if I can't pay these ever-increasing property taxes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Faith, Faith Wiley, are you out there? Faith? Okay, come on up. And then Ellen Perez, you're on deck.
Well, I'd like to say, like a lot of others here, I'm Well, I'd like to say, like a lot of others here, I'm on fixed income. I'm retired. I only get so much a month. I can't afford for you to double my taxes. I am not getting any pay increase. I am on a limited income. Now, you have already your county taxes that you do for various projects. I know one that you've been doing here in the county is for the flood issues you have here. Well, most of it is of your own doing. You allow companies to come in, build wherever they want, build however they want. You don't update any of your stormwater specs.
Yes.
And that hasn't been done in over thirty years. Then the areas flood, then you have to go in, put in drainage. That's your own fault, not mine.
Yes.
You have, you have, you have taxes that we pay every year. You need to go and learn how to stay within your income like everybody else.
Ellen Perez, Ellen, come on up, and Doug Freeman's on deck.
Groceries, gas prices, school supplies, utilities, clothing, home insurance, medical insurance, shoes, services, they all have one thing in common: the prices keep going up. The prices keep going up, but our incomes aren't.
Right.
We, the families of this county, are making hard decisions on what we cut from our grocery carts and foregoing family trips and patching up those pants just one more time. But it just doesn't seem like our city is making those hard choices when it comes to appropriating our taxes. Instead of cutting the fat, instead of divesting of the things that no longer serve our community interests or that never met their intended objectives, we are proposing raising taxes yet again. It's too much. We are at a breaking point. I implore you to stop increasing our property taxes and vote no on these tax increases and instead pursue other means of finding these funds if they are truly necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Doug Freeman, Doug, are you out there? Okay, Doug, and then Natalie.
Good evening.
Okay, you're up next, Natalie.
Hello, thank you for having this meeting. I was kind of surprised to see this notice come in the mail because it seems like last month, Escambia County School Board raised my taxes and didn't even ask for my opinion. So thank you for that. I've been living here for nine years. I moved here to, to take a teaching job, and as teachers, we don't get paid a huge amount. I've been wondering, listening especially to the retirees here tonight, thinking that in ten years when it's time to retire, am I going to have to move away from Escambia County because I can't live here anymore because I can't afford it? I look at the growth of housing within the county, and I, especially like, you know, Pine Forest Road and Nine Mile Road, all the apartments, all the additional dwellings, all the houses, and I'm thinking, okay, isn't that increasing the tax base? So therefore, the past nine years, shouldn't my tax bill have actually been going down instead of up? If there's a larger tax base and the county just keeps living within their means, instead of looking at it as the windfall, it's like, hey, here's more money to spend this year. Let's make sure we, let's make sure we spend every dime and everything, and then we can use, we can use something like, like the fire department, and I don't despise the fire department, not at all. But again, it just seems like kind of an emotional reason to raise taxes, and I keep wondering, where's the windfall? Where's it going? The idea of accountability to it, to say, okay, have somebody, a third party, come in to look at, how is this, where's all this money going for this county? It just, I scratch my head and it does, I can't figure it out.
Mary.
The only thing I can figure out, and I'm just about done here, the only thing I can figure out is that because the U.S. Navy is in our county, that our commissioner board spends money like drunken sailors.
All right, Natalie, you're up, and then Cheryl Johnson's on deck.
I don't have a speech prepared.
That's okay, you get three minutes, ma'am.
There's my mother. My father was murdered. She raised three kids on her own back. And you're raising our taxes more? We have to join together just to pay everything? She, she's retired. She's served her fifty years of life of working and everything, but you're raising the money again? She's not making the money that we're making now at our jobs. I, I do my best to support what I can, but even my back is strained on everything. I don't know what else to say. Stop raising our taxes. The money's there. Just resituate where you put it.
Yes.
It's, we're done. We're having to take care of our elderly people because they're on fixed incomes. This, this is our, my mother. Your mother, would you do this to her? Would you do this to your father, knowing that they're on fixed incomes? Why do it now? Why keep doing it? The money's there. Don't ask for more. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Cheryl Johnson, is Cheryl Johnson out there? Cheryl Johnson, one more try. Is that you, ma'am? Okay. Adam Getzschlog, I guess, is on deck. Adam Getzschlog, I guess, it sounds like that's the way it goes. All right, Cheryl, you're up.
I was born and bred in this town. Been here since seventy-two. I work in this town.
Yeah, pull the mic up, ma'am, people want to hear what you're saying.
I was born and bred in this town, and I hope to retire in it. Yeah, that ain't gonna happen. Price is going too high. I live in Cottage Hill. Y'all want to raise the fire a hundred dollars, but yet I got a thousand homes being built within three miles of my house. Every house that's built is another hundred and twenty-five dollars going to the fire department. That doesn't include what's already been built on 297, what's been built in Beulah, what's going up in Malino. Where does it end? Everybody that's coming? Y'all act like you want nothing but the native of Pensacola to pay for everything. Everybody that's coming, everybody that gets a house, that's another hundred and twenty-five dollars. The economy goes down. My overtime has been cut, no overtime, be it the water bills going up, the cable bills going up, medicine's going up. My mother's retired, my father's deceased. I have to help her out, but yet I worked my ass off to buy my own home and pay for it. I never knew that was going to be my only home because I could sell it for four times what I paid for it, but I can't afford half with these new ones. And the only jobs you're bringing to this town are coffee shop, minimum wage, part-time, no benefits. What am I going to have to do? Get four jobs just to pay my bills? I mean, you're getting extra money. Pecan Valley's a hundred and eight homes, Sanctuary's two hundred and eighty-five, there's four hundred on Neal, a hundred and seventy-eight homes in Turtle Crossing. Every new home is a hundred and twenty-five dollars. You're getting the extra money.
Thank you, Cheryl. Adam? Are you Adam Getzschlog? Okay, thank you, sir. And Frank Opitz is on deck. Thank you, Adam, come on.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I did not come here to speak. I don't have a speech prepared here. I just wanted to go and voice, I moved to Pensacola, I've been Pensacola ten years, military veteran, fellow public servant. I care about our community. I moved to Pensacola originally because I saw the tremendous growth and opportunity that Pensacola had. We have a deep-water port, we have all the military bases, we have tourism, et cetera. It is a great community with our military, for our retirees, for the schools that we have here, great opportunities for everybody to come. But a lot of the population of Pensacola is in poverty. We have a lot of the people, everyone around here are probably people that are on fixed income, retirees. When we have, we talk about taxes, I know this is not, the non-add-valorium special assessments is not a tax per se, it's a special assessment, which is a flat one across the board on everybody. And in doing so, putting out that assessment, it targets the most vulnerable ones in our community. It targets those. Everyone pays the same, whether they live in a fifty-thousand-dollar trailer or a three-million-dollar mansion, they're paying the same amount, and that's not fair. It's not for the people that everyone, the special assessments are typically used to help a specific community. When you look them up, it talks about going, putting like lighting in a certain area or park that benefits members of that particular area. People are, everyone around here is not getting the same benefit from the special assessment, and yet the special assessment is being levied on the backs of the people who can least afford it. I look, once again, we can have in Escambia County, we have so many ways that we can develop and bring industries into Pensacola, use the deep-water port, use the airports, use the schools, use the military that we have here to raise more revenue. But don't go. We want to support our firefighters. We probably support our first responders and firefighters, but the special assessment of a flat levied rate that targets the most vulnerable, those on fixed income, once again, people that are on with the special assessments, you have some people that are elderly or disabled that are exempt from some property taxes, have some deductions. Those deductions help those people survive, but the non-add-valorium assessments gets put equally across everybody, even when they don't benefit it and they can't afford it. And I just ask y'all to, once again, consider how we can go and raise those funds without going targeting the most vulnerable in the Pensacola community. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam, I appreciate your comments. Frank? Frank Opitz, are you out there? Frank Opitz, I'm saying, O-P-I-T-Z, is that correct? Frank, are you in the audience? There's a large crowd. Oh, they have it as Frank. I'm sorry, Fran. Sorry about that. Jim Pankuch, I think, P-A-N-K-U-C-H is on deck. Sorry about that, Fran. Well, Fran was in front of you. So I know, you're up next. Now, you're ready. All right, thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon. I didn't plan on talking today, but I've been listening.
Ma'am, will you pull the mic up?
Yes.
You've got a soft voice.
I didn't plan on speaking today, but after hearing all these people here, I feel that you all need to really listen to what's happening here in Pensacola. I moved here twenty years ago from Miami, Florida, and I couldn't wait to get out of Miami, okay? It was horrible. If all they were doing was bleeding us every year for more taxes, more taxes, and the crime and everything that came with it was ridiculous. And you need to look at this very carefully. Pensacola has the charm, okay, that most cities don't have, and we have people here that are retired, they've come here to live a good life on a fixed income. You guys have the opportunity to keep that this way, and I see greed here.
Yes.
I hate to, it makes me very sad because when I came here, I was so excited. I felt like Pensacola was special. It had charm, hospitality. We're losing that now. We need to get it back. Let Destin, be Destin in Panama City, keep Pensacola small and for the people that live here.
Yes.
We've got beaches, we've got so many things, and yet you guys are not listening to these people. And it's very sad for me because I, I hope I don't have to leave Pensacola because I can't afford it. I'm retired, and I, I just can't stand to see what's happening here. Please, don't ruin Pensacola.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Jim, you're up. And then Ian Gilmore's on deck. Okay, go ahead, Jim.
Mr. Carroll looked pretty good for getting beat up. But anyhow.
I've had tough assignments.
I just want to run some numbers by you guys because like in years 2022, do you know what the budget was at thirty-seven point seven million dollars? Did you know that, what you ended up with? How about in 2023, what you spent? Forty-eight point three million. That was an increase of twenty-one point nine four six basis points that was spent. Then we went ahead in 2024, spent fifty-two point nine million dollars, increased twenty-eight point seven three three percent basis points. Y'all knew that, right? Okay, so now we want to go ahead. I think you heard enough from all the residents here that we just really need to go back to the board and sharpen our pencils a little bit and see where we need to make the cuts from the board instead of taxing these people, instead of taxing us. We can't afford it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Ian, Ian Gilmore, okay, sir, you're coming up, and then Bruce Gamari, I'm assuming that's how you say it. All right, sir, you're up.
Yes, my name is Ian Gilmore. I'm the president of Redline Engineering LLC here in Pensacola over the last twenty-three years, and Redline has been pretty good to me. I own several commercial properties here around town, and I've been receiving these notices letting me know how much property taxes were going up. And I'll just highlight one of them here. This is thirty-three seventy-seven Bill Metzger. When I bought that property in 2021, I paid seventy-nine hundred and seven dollars in tax. The proposed increase without MSBU this year goes up thirty-eight hundred and ninety-one bucks. You add in MSBU to that of eleven hundred and eighty-two dollars more, and we're looking at a property tax increase in just four years of sixty-four percent, which is pretty wild. I mean, I'm not a mathematician, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that's something like sixteen percent. I don't know, what is that, maybe three to five times inflation, something like that. And all of my, my properties here that we operate out of, I'm looking at these same things, just absolutely massive increases. You know, if you guys, you know, needed to go up three percent a year, I could totally understand that. I wouldn't be here. I'd be at home right now if it was just going up, you know, by normal inflation, but it's not. And I want to just leave you with something so that you kind of understand the situation that I'm in here. This is my profit and loss statement at Redline for July of this year. We've done five hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars of business in the month of July, and we're really taking it on the chin right now. In, in July alone, we spent two hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and forty dollars on the new tariffs. We're doing everything we can to bring as much of our manufacturing here as possible, but it's really difficult. The cost of, of steel here is, is so high that it's, it's making it triple in some cases if I bring stuff here. I'm doing my best, but just for July alone, our losses for the month of July were a hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. Can you imagine for a moment if you were me, you went to work all week long, and instead of getting your deposit on Friday, you wrote the company that you work for a check for thirty thousand dollars? That's what I have been doing for about the past eight or nine weeks. And, you know, when I get this kind of stuff that comes across my desk, that property taxes are going up sixty-four percent, you know, in goodness, four years, I just, I have no idea where that money's going to come from. I'm losing a lot of sleep right now trying to figure out who I am going to lay off and win in order to stop all of this bleeding, and I'm just taking it from every angle. I've got all of this from you guys, and then I've got those nearly a quarter million dollars a month in tariffs that were taken from Washington, and it, it has to end somewhere. Sometime soon, I'm going to run out of money. Do you folks have any questions for me?
No, sir. You covered a lot of ground. Thank you. Bruce, Bruce Gamire, is Bruce out there? Bruce Gamire? Am I saying that right? G-A-M-I-E-R-E? Are you Bruce, sir? Okay, and then Dawn A-A-H-O-E is on deck. Or Dana, I'm sorry. Or Dana, I'm sorry.
My name is Bruce Gamire, 12730 Lillian Highway, Pensacola. My family's been here for 55 years now, and I'm here to speak for, I'm, I'm retired now, and I'm here to speak for all retirees and people that are on fixed incomes. That the property taxes have become an oppression on the people. And every time you turn around, someone else adds something else to your property taxes. And it's been echoed many times. Other folks are on fixed incomes as well that, that aren't on social security. So we support the fire department, but the fire department, the money needs, is the suggestion has been find out how to fund them other ways than taxing property owners. And the one gentleman's idea about having a Doge committee to help you is a, is a good idea. So, so that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. All right. Dan, are you Mr., are you Dan? Okay, come on up, Dan. Sorry, I, sorry that I overlooked you.
Thank you. I'm also speaking for senior citizens. Escambia County currently has about a 14% poverty level. I'm in that bracket. And here's the reason why. The fire protection assessment that you all are proposing is an 81% increase. Now, may not seem nuts to you, but as a senior citizen on a fixed income, it's tremendous. In 2025, my bills have increased 34.5%. Since 2023, they increased 135%. Now I have another 81% increase, which brings my total bills 250% increase since 2023. But yet, social security increases since 2019 has only increased 22.7%. So I'm still at about a 220, 230% deficit. It will take an average senior citizen with this increase 23 years before they can catch up to the 81% increase that you're doing for fire protection. I would like to get out of the system, and here's why. I live in a mobile home community. I went up to the fire station one and talked with those individuals. And because I live in a mobile home, a mobile home has a flashback, a flashover, which happens somewhere between three to five minutes. I drove 55 to 60 miles an hour up to the fire station one. I've never seen a fire truck do that speed. It takes them, according to Google Maps, seven minutes to get to my address. So I would have a complete flashover where everything in that mobile home would be on fire. In 10 to 15 minutes, I have a roof collapse. So if I try to put out the fire myself, which say takes a couple of minutes, then I decide to call the fire department, they get there and they take out their hoses, my, my mobile home is gone. And has it happened in that neighborhood numerous times. So I would like to elect not to even pay this and be out of the fire protection tax at all because it does not benefit me in any way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Thank you. Ian Simmons? Ian Simmons, are you out there? Are you Ian, ma'am? I'm sorry, Jan Simmons. I apologize. I kept my readers on to see the small print. Robert Pasero's on deck. Sorry about that, Jim.
Hello, thank you for being here and hearing us. From a consumer standpoint, I don't want to be emotional, but I want to tell you that I moved to Pensacola, Florida in 2008 with my sweetheart. He passed away last May. So I'm kind of in this force situation of how do you fix the roof? How do you fix these things? I work as a nurse. You think I make good money? My roofs, my one room's falling off. I can't afford to fix it. My roof is probably 12 years old. These are things I don't have the money for, yet taxes keep raising and raising. Philip had some properties he bought for 30, 40,000 back in the day. Taxes don't stop when you're in probate. So I'm still paying taxes. Meanwhile, I've got investors trying to take everything he worked so hard for. So I'm telling you, it's not to feel sorry for me, but just from a consumer standpoint, I can't fix my roof right now. My one room's falling off. I was doing the lot that we're possibly going to lose because we got investors on, and I get this tax letter saying taxes are going to go up. I mean, it'd be nice if they stopped during probate, but they don't. You know, and I have a good job, and I'm, feel like I'm stretched with all these things I can't even pay for and afford. I'm whipping out my credit card to get my car fixed, and I'm spending $2,000, and it still stalls on me. I'm not saying it so you feel sorry for me, but just so you can see the human aspect of I'm struggling. And then at my job, I work with, in the psych ward, I used to work oncology, but I'm, I'm pouring my heart into the community, into kids that are addicted to drugs and mental illness. And I'm like, I just want a break. I want a relief. I want to be able to pay for a roof, for air conditioning, for my room falling off. I'm not going to attack anybody, but Pensacola is wonderful. I moved from Phoenix, Arizona. We didn't have a beach there. Tourism's great here. Take the money from somewhere else. And like I said, I have a decent job and I'm struggling. Maybe find the money somewhere else, raise the taxes a little bit. Thank you.
Jan, can I ask you a question? What part of town do you live in? Just, I might be able to help you.
I'm up of Olive, Olive Stonework area. And they were sending me taxes for a lot that.
Okay, I just wondered, I was hoping I could maybe help you with your roof, but I was just interested.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jan.
Well, in the room that's falling off, somebody built it on a deck. The deck rotted, and when I bought it as a foreclosure, I didn't know that. So the deck that was rotting, rotted under the room, and now the room is separated from the house. So we boarded it up inside, but yeah.
I'm sorry about that.
So taxes, more taxes aren't going to help me.
Thank you, ma'am. Robert Pasero, and then William King is on deck.
Hi, I don't, I don't have any speeches either. There's a lot of good points. Today you have a lot of retirees and people that aren't working, but there's a lot of working families that, you know, can't be here right now. 502, people are still working. So I think you should make these meetings a little later, maybe seven o'clock, so when people get home from work, they can also come here. You might also need a bigger room, but maybe you can build one with all the extra money. I don't know. Like everyone, I, I gotta, you just voted on more taxes and more taxes. And now I have the fire department, they want more taxes. And I'm not going to beat a dead horse. You've heard it from all of us, all right? But I'll save you some money. You, you look, and oh, and the other thing, I tried calling up because they said, call up, ask any questions you have. You call up the fire department and it's really vague. Yeah, maybe four or five stations we're going to build, you know, but they don't have any information. You know, so I says, is there a website? Can I go to website, see what, you know, what, what is this, that we're all paying for? There's no website. So I don't know what you're billing here. You got some high numbers, 8.5 for over here, 8.5 for this one, six and a half million for this one, ad living quarters, four million. Go build the, buy a house that's already made. I'll save you three and a half million dollars right there, okay? You can get a four bedroom, you know, but it's too much, and you've heard it from everybody here, too much. We're, we're being squeezed everywhere, everywhere. We're being squeezed. We don't got much more, so it hurts. So you have a big turnout here. I hope you, I hope you, you're seeing this. I also didn't like the fact that you, if we don't pay the tax, you're going to come take our house. That, that's, that's not nice, okay? Yeah, that is gangster. And the, the last thing I want to say is, you know, I moved down to Florida back in 2018, okay? So I'm new here relatively, all right? Escambia County in '21. I live in Kintoman, okay? I love it here. It's great. But you guys are going to make it like New York, and you're doing it so far with the taxes, you're doing a good job, okay? I was paying $20,000 in property taxes. So no property taxes. DeSantis has got it right, okay? We bought the house. So all these taxes, you need to rethink it, and I hope you, you go back and sharpen your pencils.
Thank you, sir. William King, William King, you're up. And then Ken Burnham. Are you William, sir? Yep, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a little statement to make. As a property owner, we are the bedrock of Escambia County. If you have any pet project, if our school needs a new gym, if our sheriff needs a new deputy, we support it, we pay for it. And there's never any relief in there for the property owner. Guys, think outside the box. Come up with ways to raise funds for these things that are community based. A fire department and a police, a police department is for the entire, the community, not just the property owners. So make the entire community support it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. All right, is, are Ken, are you Ken Burnham? Come on up, Ken. Dan, G-O-U-G-H, you're on deck. All right, Ken, thank you.
How's it going? Ken Burnham, District One, for 53 years. I didn't come here, I'd rather not come today at all, but I'm like everybody else who got these papers in the mail. And I've been in District One, like I said, 53 years. I've got a couple low-income houses, some vacant property, some of those that I purchased off tax deed sales. And what I come here today to say was, we pay enough. I'm paying so much in taxes right now, it's, it's, it's too much. And not only is it too much, the county already has ways of levying liens on property, and we do not need another way for them to levy a lien on any properties, just like I bought the ones off from the tax deed sale to be sold at the courthouse steps. We pay enough. We all appreciate first responders. I don't think nobody's going to deny that here today, but this is not the way to fix the problem. The money's there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Dan, Dan Gouge, G-O-U-G-H, and then Edward Sisson's up. Thank you, Dan.
Well, commissioners, I'm here in opposition to this proposed millage rate increase on property taxes. Right now, I have a problem paying my property taxes at the rate they're at. And I think that Commissioner Stromberger, I understand that you're opposed to this as well. Is that correct? I had a prepared statement here, but I'm not going to do, go through that because I think the people that have come up here have made it clear. I don't know anybody out here who are your constituents that have expressed favor or want to have this tax rate increase. And Mr. Chairman Culler, I understand that you're in District Two. That's my district. I understand you're for this rate increase. Is that correct?
I'll articulate.
Answer, because this is, these are your constituents out here.
I understand.
These are the people you represent. You're hearing from your constituents. So how do you plan to vote? Are you going to vote the way your constituents want you to vote? Or are you going to vote because you think it's necessary?
Power of the people.
Now, I can tell you one thing right now. I know a little bit about taxes as a real estate broker for 15 years, so I understand taxes, especially property taxes. And I know for a fact that this county right here in the last five years has better than a 42% increase in revenue because of the valuation of properties that have gone up because there's been reassessments. My property alone has gone up $500 in the last five years. That's $100 a year. I only wish my fixed income went up at the rate of 8% a year, but it hasn't done it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Edward Sisson, and then Daniel Strawbridge.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to speak. And esteemed members of the commission and the county, I appreciate your time to talk today. It's, it's shocking, obviously, and I came just to get more information because the letter I got didn't have a whole lot of information in it. And I'm not saying yes, but I'm also not saying no, but I don't have the information. I need information. And transparency is what's going to be key, I think, on whether this sinks or swims. Now, being a lifelong steward of the public trust myself, I know there's difficult decisions to make, and I know things cost money. But I think the empty space that we've heard from so many people is, where's the money going that we're already paying? And the other side of that coin is, as a government official, sometimes we spin plates and we keep spinning them, and oh, we got to keep spinning this plate. But do we need to keep spinning this plate? Or can we let some things go away and do we need to fund this other stuff? So is there an alternative plan where we are still paying for something that maybe we don't need, but it's because we've always done it, right? We say that when we work for, like, this is the way we've always done things. Maybe we need to look at some of those things and come up with another option on, if you want us to continue to build and add, it's going to take more money. If you want us to reshuffle the deck, here are some things that we propose as your leaders that perhaps aren't a good use of our money. And here's some things where we can possibly save money or cross things off the list. And that's always tough because that's somebody's turf too, right? Like, I get that's somebody's idea, that's their program, that's their plan, that's their baby, and so they want to sponsor it. But I think there's more than one objective way to look at it. There's more than one way to skin that, to find a happy medium. And again, I think transparency is going to be the key to say, this is the increase and this is why we need it, and this is where we're going to use it. It's hard to argue with it if you have the facts and if you can think about it rationally. But I think having that information, being that transparent, and then letting the community, let, letting the citizens decide, no, this is where I want to put my money, or this is what's important to us, I think is what is the win for everyone, regardless of what our financial situation might be.
Thank you, sir. Daniel Strawbridge, thank you. And then Josh, you're up after him, okay?
Good afternoon. Yeah, I echo what everybody else is saying here, that the taxes are too high, we don't want them to go up. But I have another little problem. I live in Mr. Strawberger's district, and we have no fire protection. We're paying for fire protection, but our fire department was closed down several years ago on Bauer Road. They have not put it back in. So we checked into this a little bit. Now, I don't want my taxes to go up. I really don't want them to go up when I'm not getting anything for it. So we checked into it. Mr. Strawberger, do you know where our fire department comes from if my house catches fire? Lillian, Alabama. I do not pay them taxes. We get nothing here for the taxes we are paying. I don't want them to go up, but if they have to come from Lillian, Alabama, when my house catches fire, across 98 Bridge and down 98, there's not, they'll have my new house built by the time they get here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Daniel. Commissioner Strawberger, hold on, y'all, please. Commissioner Strawberger, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I just want to say, Daniel, you're getting a firehouse, you know, you're getting one. And I know that, that, I know Lillian Highway.
Please.
Are the Lillian Fire Department is your, they're supposed to help. I don't think they ever have helped. And your closest, the closest fire department to you that will help is three miles from my house, and I think it's almost 10 miles probably from your house. And it's, it's, it's the one on Inter eighty point road. Yeah. It's the one on Inter eighty, Inter eighty point road. Yeah. Yep. So, but we're going to, we're going to rectify that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Strawberger, Josh Roberson, you're up. And then Elvis Christopher's next. Did you have your light on? Okay, Josh Robinson, and then Elvis Christopher's next.
Hey, good evening. Joshua Roberson. Lot more people here tonight than two nights ago. Hey, so poverty came back up and everything else. You had a public hearing tonight. Trim law was stated right in the beginning because you went ahead and voted the same, the same, same rate, still static. None of you on this board now can say that you haven't raised taxes. You understand that. So what you could have done, because I'm, by the way, 100%. So, what you could've done, because I'm, by the way, 100%, stand behind every single firefighter in this county. What you're doing is showing a hand that if your governor does get rid of property taxes, you are gonna, you are going to just MSBU us to death. That is what you're showing. You're showing your hand right now. The hospital MSBU, then you got the new MSBU coming now, you just talked about four or more. In the very beginning of this meeting, I didn't make it here in time to sign up for it before you voted, you could've taken a step and you could've done, took the rollback rate of, what, 6.4? Been the first board since 2009 to lower property taxes in this county to offset the MSBU to support our firefighters. The coolest thing is, is what you did was took 10 million out of the general budget to un-politicize our first responders from coming grovelling to the four kings and queen now to get their money. That's what you did, that's a great thing, because the local government should take care of the firefighters, they should take care of the EMS, and they should take care of the sheriff's office and everything, and, and infrastructure. The 500 and some odd million dollars that had the budget has grown in the last five years, what do we have to show for it as a public and as a citizen? Nothing. Crumbling infrastructure. What do we have? I know you're not gonna answer me, because you don't wanna get into back and forth, and I understand that, but I will answer, uh, let's see here, I wrote down some notes here about trimming the fat, uh, taking your house for no taxes, don't worry, they're not planning ahead, just like before, um, they don't wanna take the rollback rate, what are you gonna do when the property taxes go away? You're not planning for that. The board hasn't planned for the future, I don't know, since when? You're just waiting, you're reactive. You know that timid senior chief you were talking about? You don't have one. That's why you're being reactive. So, there's not gonna be a house taken for property taxes, you're gonna start taking them for non-advalorm taxes. Your population growth, that you say, hey, let's build the houses, the population will come, we'll get our taxes, in the last five years, it's 3.2%. Since the county's in the best financial shape that it's ever been in, hey, why are we still raising taxes? So, uh, there is one way we could trim it all down. How much do you pay for dinners? That's the people's money too. Remember, you guys don't have any money. It all comes from the people. It's the people's money. How much do you pay for catered dinners every time you have an evening meeting? That's my money. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Don't say you, it's back there.
Thank you, Josh.
Give the firefighters their money.
Elvis Christopher, are you out there?
Yeah.
Okay. And then Mel Pino, you're up next. Mel, you're after Elvis.
All right, all right. Yeah. Good evening, everyone. I'm from District One, and I'm happy to be here tonight, but one of the main concerns that I have is, when I get a letter that's just one page, and it's surrounding making a whole lot of decision that is, that's affecting our lives financially, I would really like the opportunity to, for us to get that dignity, to be treated with dignity and respect, meaning that, okay, the community has a need. Lay out what that specific needs are. Show us where the issues are, because we, in the community, we not running from, we don't run from our responsibilities. For those of us that's property owners, we're not people that run from our responsibilities, okay? So treat us with some respect. Let us know where the needs are, then lay out what the options are, what options we have. Don't just give us, we have to raise this money, and if we don't, our, our homes is gonna be taken from us. I have a problem with that. That's treating us with disrespect, and that doesn't give a good feeling at all. And for you folks being our leaders, you don't need, we don't need to be doing that. We need to be communicating on a level where we can understand exactly what's going on in our community. And this correspondence that was sent to us, somebody could've taken the time and just give us a little bit more information than just one page. Give us a little bit more information so that when we come down here, we can say, well, okay, we look at option one, we look at option two, we look at option three, and we think option three is what we can work with. In that way, we can have a civil meeting, and we can move forward and get things taken care of in our community. And that's what I would like to see going forward. This, 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 this short message, and then just shoving, trying to shove things down our throat, and then threatening us about losing our home or property, that's beginning to be really distasteful.
Thank you, sir. Mel Pino, you're up. Mel, you're up. And then Kevin is, oh, see, Kevin, you're up after Mel, okay?
Thank you, Melissa Pino, 413 Southeast Boblets. I went grocery shopping today. I, I just keep thinking that I can stop being surprised at checkout, and I don't get past the point where I'm like, no, that can't be right. Every time you go, it's more. Friend of ours was at CVS, and there was a woman walking around with a clipboard, and there were 600 price tag changes on it, and he's like, whoa, I got here just in time, and she said, well, you didn't get here in time for all the stickers I changed out last week. So while all of these people are in the room, I just wanna make sure that everybody understands that while the state is holding out the carrot, we don't know whether they're really gonna do it. It's looking like it, but they're holding this out, that they're gonna put it on the ballot. I've learned not to trust Tallahassee in anything. And so I want everybody here to be mindful, you know, you guys are catching it, and honestly, I, it's, it's pretty tone deaf, and y'all know I've been saying, it's getting so bad out here, there's going to be a tipping point. Here it is. I support the fire, and some of these folks may not know that the people at Paradise came who have lost their insurance for a year and a half, and we said it with them, we said, raise the fire MSBU. And then the bottom fell out of everything. So of course now nobody wants that. And Commissioner Hofberger, I don't agree with a lot of what you do, but I certainly did agree with one of your first initiatives being firehouses. So people do need to understand that if you guys don't find a way to pay for them, and I'm not saying MSBU, we, we will not get those extra firehouses. I just want people to know what Tallahassee is doing, because whereas the board could have reined some things in in years past, and you know I've been down here railing about development and flooding for seven years now, but now the state won't even let you guys fix it, right? They've taken away home rule, DeSantis executive ordered a limitation on the very fees that people want out of contractors, because local municipalities started doing it, and all of his buddies in the contracting business, all the lobbyists said, oh, no, no, so we went, whoop, fiat. We're gonna limit what the local governments can do. When you talk about grocery prices, that's certainly not anything you guys are doing, and get ready, because it's gonna get worse. Wait until 20 million people lose their healthcare on the big beautiful bill. So this is going to get worse, you guys are gonna have to get creative. Please fund our fire, but maybe there is another way. You already voted earlier in the meeting, but there's always a will where there's a way.
Thank you, Mel. Kevin, you're up next. Destiny Watson, you're on deck.
Kevin Wade, 413 Southeast Boblets, and yeah, the grocery prices are going up, up, up. The price of homes is going up, 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 up. We're taking the least of those who get paid in this state, in this country, and we're shipping them off, making them go away. Right now, tourism is down 40%. Where else are you gonna find the money? You know? Brilliant people have voted for tariffs. That's not very smart. That means you're gonna pay more. The people who are in this room that are retired now, most of them remember a time when their parents looked at the possibility of paying a marginal 90% tax. From 1943 to 1963, the top marginal tax rate was 90%. 1963, huge changes. 1907, 1968, another big bump down. The tax rate that we end up looking at right now is fairly close to the initiatives that were brought in the mid-'70s. During the mid-'70s, the military took huge hits, absolutely huge hits. Many, many ships were brought back that had been in mothballs for decades and decades. In 1973, the average home could be actually purchased by a family who is making minimum Minimum wage at that time, at this time, what, what would the, what would the dollar rate have to be for the average home to be purchased by somebody who makes minimum wage? The answer is $67 an hour. How many in this room made $67 an hour most of their life? There's a big squeeze coming. People voted for an absolutely insane amount of squeeze. It's coming. Home rule, we've been screaming about home rule going away. People that have been powering Florida for 30 years, making it so that there will be no home rule, and all these people here want to rule their own home. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Destiny Watson, and then Christie Rosen.
Hello. Good evening, Commissioners. I normally don't do this, but I'm here. So I'm here tonight as a homeowner and taxpayer concerned about the proposed fire protection assessment increase. Um, I'm probably gonna say what most of people already have said. So the fallback demands for fairness and accountability, um, your sunset clause and reauthorization. If you pass this increase, put in a three- to five-year sunset clause, so it expires unless reauthorized after public review. Why prevents this from becoming a permanent hidden tax without reevaluation? Detailed spending plan in annual report. Require a law, a line item spending plan with a yearly public report showing what percentage went to staffing, equipment, and buildings. Why? Keeps them from using the MSB money as a slush fund. Enforces transparency. Separate capital versus operating costs. Acts. Commit to using the lost sales tax for fire stations and trucks, and limit the MSBU increases to daily operations like staffing and safety here. Um, I'm not sure when firefighters' equipment tears up, but I'm pretty sure it might not be every year, but if it is, just get that together. And then, um, separate capital versus operating costs. Did I say that already? Commit to using lost sales for fire stations and trucks. Yes, I said that already. Okay, um, let's see. Okay, so the costs have gone up, but much of the demand isn't coming from long-term residents, it's from the growth encouraged by all the campaigns inviting people to move to Escambia. I wanted this place kinda like a little Miami, 'cause I always travel to Orlando and Miami to go work, but Pensacola's small, and the traffic is terrible, there's, um, accidents all over the place, I'm not sure it's from the new people, the old people, but people cannot drive. Um, sorry, yeah, it's annoying. The sewer part is not, this is separate, but it stinks around here, so if it was like a little Miami, it needs to smell better. Um, let's see. Um, I know the MSBU hike is for recruitment and retention of firefighters, keeping up with state and federal safety requirements like gear replacement, like I already said, and then covering costs like insurance, fuel, utilities, and medical costs. If leadership isn't transparent about that, it looks like double-dipping, so transparency is best. Maybe having an independent audit review could help, and then, um, it's not a joke to me or the homeowners paying these bills, so just stay serious in here, and then, yeah, that's all.
Thank you, Destiny.
Thank you.
Great comments. Christie Rosen, is Christie out there? Okay, Christie, come on up, and then Louise Noeth, I think, is on deck.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Christie Rosen. I live in District Five, and I am one of the co-founders of the new community group, If Not Us. I'm here to talk about advalorm, the advalorm taxes, not just the numbers, but the actual people behind them. Holding the millage flat, the millage flat might sound fair on paper, but last year, even with no increase, county revenues jumped about 15% because the property values raised. Rose, that translates into a real hardship for families. The seniors that are in fixed incomes, small businesses owners already stretched thin, renters who see higher bills passed along by their landlords, people who are in disability like myself. These are real neighbors and community members struggling to meet, make, and to meet. Every resident has a right to essential services, safe roads, well-staffed schools, libraries, and emergency services. I know that you've spoken in the past about how schools are struggling, our children are struggling in your district. That is important to me. Kids are important to me. I wanna support, we want services, but we need transparency, we need to know where our money is going, we need to make sure it's going to the right things. We spent $25 million investment in the John R. Jones Sports Complex, which seems out of balance with the urgent needs that we actually have in this community. And it's time we get back to, we've gotten into the habit that people just get our votes, it's time that you remember, you're gonna have to earn our vote. We're getting back to that point. We are paying attention. These meetings, you're seeing more and more people showing up. We need to remember, we have rights and responsibilities as citizens. I would love to see where we do a sales tax, so those who are better off, who spend more money, invest more money, whether they're renters or homeowners, and those, and tourists especially, and those of us who don't have a lot of means, whatever we're able to do, we do. But we're able to invest in our children, we're able to invest in our roads. I'm actually getting ready to go paint rainbows around all the potholes, because maybe we'll get this, this state to come and paint over them and fix our potholes. So that's my next project, if anybody's interested. But I wanna be accountable to you, I wanna be a partner with you, but we need accountability from y'all, not just one piece of paper saying this is what's happening. We need to know what's happening with our money.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Louise Noeth, I think that's correct, and then Rosemary DeWolf is next.
Good evening. Especially good evening to all of you. My husband and I are new residents and business owners here. We came tonight, when this thing showed up, to find out more. We moved here because of the culture, the community, and the conversation that we found when we were doing the investigation over seven different states in two years. This, oh my, this doesn't do a lot of explanation. I wasn't going to speak, but for what all of these ladies and gentlemen have said, that's the conversation I came to hear. That's what I wanted to find out, what did this really mean? Including having a conversation with a uniformed firefighter in the back who tells me that this has not really been addressed in more than 10 years for a raise? I say to you, District 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, where is the fiscal mismanagement? There is fiscal mismanagement here. And for you to just drop this bomb, especially with the bombs going off in Washington on a regular basis that will come and hit us awfully hard in ways that none of us ever thought when we voted, and I don't wanna get into that, but I say to you, as I said to a council some years ago, when they thought it would be a good idea to put a halfway house between two elementary schools, go practice in front of your mirror with your makeup and the things you're going to say when the national media comes, the first time they come and kill one of those kids. What are you gonna say when these people start dying and they're out on the street? What are you gonna say when they start taking their houses away and they throw them on the streets? Is that what we're looking at? Is that what I'm hearing? I don't know, I'm ignorant in all of this. I can only act by how you treat us. I don't know any of you in this room this way or that way, except the guy I live with. I'm not particularly I'm not particularly thrilled right now, and I'm wondering, did we make a mistake coming to Pensacola?
Thank you, Louise. Rosemary DeWolff, all right, Rosemary, you're next. And that's our last speaker.
Good evening. I came and I listened and I'm shocked. I have been in the financial business for fifty-three years. And in the financial business, you budget money. You take the money from one and you budget so it equals what you need to do. You don't just take, oh, I'm gonna grab this and go there. Oh, I'm gonna put this here. No. That's not how one and one equals. One and one equals two. Mr. May is leaving. He is my district person, you know? I have never seen him.
Hey, hey, I got it.
I've never seen him. You people on the board need to know that one and one equals two. You have to think out of the box, not just in the box. You need to take the rattle out of your playpen and work with it. You guys got a lot of money. Use it for what needs to be done. Don't raise the taxes. Desantis is right. Take the taxes away. Make us put our money that we're paying to good cause, not wherever the firemen need to be paid. There's also volunteers that would love to volunteer, but what? Pensacola doesn't want all volunteers. So why? Why are we even fighting with you people when you don't wanna help us? Now, we're the ones, every single person in this room and every single person who lives in Pensacola pays taxes. So we pay your finances. We pay your salary. For what? What do we get in return? Higher tax bills and a bunch of BS. Sorry, doesn't work in my financial district.
Thank you, Rosemary. All right, Board. I think these people deserve some...
I wanted to say two things.
Ma'am, you have to sign up. We don't just let people charge, we don't let people just charge a podium.
Tourists, tax them.
Ma'am.
Deepwater Park.
Ma'am, we use this and have order. If you wanted to speak, you should've signed up respectfully.
You make it hard to do.
Board, we're at the point where we should have some discussion and tell these folks our thoughts on this. Does anyone wanna speak?
Nobody's got the mouth to do it.
Please, let's be respectful. I mean, all right. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
Do you mind if I speak, Chairman? Yeah, please go ahead, Commissioner Stroberger.
So I think a lot of folks here are making an assumption that the Board has grown up with a silver spoon and we know, I don't know everybody on the Board. I know that I haven't. I know that Commissioner Kohler didn't grow up with a silver spoon either. I came here thirty-five years ago next month to go to Aviation Officer Canada School. I'd been back and forth over and over again, and I was living in Scottsdale. Where's the person from Phoenix? And one day, my wife came home and she said, "Where are we going next?" That was in 2019. We were living in Scottsdale. I put a spreadsheet together of all these places that we'd been, that we liked, and I kept coming back to Pensacola and I asked her, "Why aren't we already in Pensacola?" It's seventy percent less to live here than it was in Scottsdale. And I came here retired. I wasn't expecting to be sitting here. But you're right, it's affordable here, it really is. But you're right, we should sharpen the pencil up and we're gonna, we need to make some hard choices. I think that everybody loves the idea of no property taxes. And everyone loves the idea of DOGE. I wonder how many Democrats out there are raising their hand about DOGE, because I don't think that was too popular with them. But the property tax, eliminating the property tax, you're being fooled by that. Property tax is a wealth tax. And the wealthy, the ones who have big homes, pay a lot of property taxes. Now, that, I'm not making, I'm not saying that I think everyone should be paying, you know, more even if you got less. I'm just saying that I've seen estimates of between eleven and fifteen percent is what the sales tax will have to be. And we're not gonna be collecting it. Tallahassee is. So we are gonna lose home rule. We're gonna beg and borrow from Tallahassee to get our roads fixed and stuff, so that romantic idea of having no property taxes is gonna fade quickly as soon as we don't get things that we want. And you're gonna have to go to Tallahassee to have these discussions about roads, because we're not gonna be able to help you. Our property taxes amount to about a third of the taxes that we collect. And I think that we control about a third of the budget, roughly, right?
Exactly.
So there's a lot of dedicated money. Did you wanna say something, Stephon?
Yes, sir. Just saying, the County's general fund is, two-thirds of that is basically fixed cost and one-third of it is discretionary.
Right. So, but you're right, I agree with you. There's some things I think that need to go on the ballot next year, and we do need to make some hard choices about what we're gonna spend things on, just like we do with our households, right? And I'm prepared to do that, and I think the Board's prepared to do that too. I had some agreement the last time we had a Commissioner meeting about that, about rolling back the tax. I don't think there's enough agreement on this Board to do that. I don't know. We can't talk to each other. Another subject, I'm sorry.
Need you, Board Men, is that...
Ma'am, please, please let the Board have discussion and...
We all have different opinions about why we do the things we do. I don't think that everybody, I don't think, when everybody comes to these meetings, they seem to demonize the Board so quickly. And I think that you've got a lot of agreement up here already on a lot of different things. I know what's going up. I know, is everybody showing up to the school board meetings to talk about that property tax? Holy smokes. The children's trust, the millage rate's the same, I know property values have gone up, FPL is higher, we got the fire MSBU insurance. I had my insurance canceled a couple days ago. In fact, not just my hazard insurance on my house, but my car insurance too. So we're shopping for new insurance, because they don't wanna insure us here. Those are my thoughts. Thank you, Chairman.
Thanks, Commissioner Stroberger. Commissioner Holfberger.
I do wanna echo that, and I don't know that any of us were born rich. When my parents divorced, my mom and I moved to Pensacola into Jasmine Creek Apartments, and then when she could afford a house as a single mom on a receptionist's salary, we moved off of Detroit. And that's where I finished high school at, and I'm very thankful for that. Tonight, I think we have the opportunity to provide some transparency and some additional details. And listening to you speak, there has been a lot of misinformation. So I took some notes. I'm gonna go through what I have here, and then myself and Melanie Luna, the District four aide, we will work to get a video out to give you guys a little bit more detail. LOST money is being used to build the additional fire stations that are needed for our community, which will help lower insurance rates. Impact fees can only be used for a certain project, and they can only be distributed once that pot of money is full. You cannot use impact fees to pay wages for firefighters. Our current starting, please let me speak, I'll let you speak. Our current starting wage for our firefighters is thirteen dollars an hour. You talk about not being able to afford groceries. These men and women run into burning buildings to save lives, and they're making thirteen dollars an hour. So this MSBU is to bring their starting wage up to sixteen dollars an hour, which is still lower than any other local municipality. TDT money can only be used for things that drive tourism. Someone said they don't care what bucket it comes from, and I understand that and I get that, but unfortunately, that is state law. We cannot use that money for anything else. So I get the ball fields were a big spend, it was a big investment and the ROI was there. When we talk about local option sales tax, that money that we spend on the ball fields will drive people to our community to spend money in our restaurants and at our stores, which will up our local option sales tax. So we were good stewards with that pot of money to provide a better ROI. Sales tax is seven and a half percent in the Escambia County. We do not get all seven and a half percent. Six percent, I believe, goes to the state. We get the remainder and part of it goes to the school system. So we get seven and a half a cent. Is it a cent or a half a cent goes to the county?
We have the penny sales tax, which is our LOST, and the half cent goes to the school board.
Okay, so we get a penny of that. So we don't get seven and a half, we get one percent. The MSBU, someone said it was a slush fund. It is protected. It can only be used for firefighters. Same with the sheriff's fund. Consumption taxes paid per service, somebody mentioned that, that's illegal. We can't do that. Sales tax, we cannot just raise sales tax either. That has to go on the ballot and it also has several steps you have to do to approve by the state. We did check all this. The MSBU that you're talking about is an eight-dollar-a-month increase. So to take someone who's making thirteen dollars an hour, to move those men and women to sixteen dollars an hour, when you break it down per month, I think most of us can agree that an eight-dollar-per-month ask is reasonable, considering we haven't raised it since 2013. We are the only county and municipality connected to us that do not charge a stormwater tax. I live in the city, I get charged a stormwater tax. I have friends that live in Gulf Breeze, they pay a stormwater tax. Same with Milton, same with Santa Rosa County. So when we talk about infrastructure and you ask what your money's going to, and you ask what we're funding, we are using that money to fund stormwater projects. And the additional money that we have been using to fund the fire department from the general pot was about ten to eleven thousand dollars. All of that money has been reallocated to public safety initiatives. What most of you might not know is about two months ago, we signed a contract with the sheriff's office that was a historic contract for the state of Florida, considering the raises and the additional personnel that will be used to keep our counties safe. So that is where that money's going. It's not going to other items, it is going to public safety. I hope that provides some clarity. If you have specific questions, please email those, and Melanie and I will try to put that information in the video.
Commissioner Berry, I saw you had your light on for a little while.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I mean, there were, you know, there were comments about the, you know, maybe have it be Ad Valorem rather than non-Ad Valorem. That's what's been subsidizing the operation for a number of years, I believe. This past year, we subsidized the, we subsidized the operation to the tune of about ten million dollars out of the general fund. There were a couple speakers that also mentioned volunteer, you know, the volunteerism, and you know, as a Commissioner that represents a district that historically had the most volunteers, just in the, you know, twelve years that Commissioner May and I have served, the numbers of volunteers have fallen dramatically, as they have in, you know, many civic organizations, the activity and the interest. The interest may be there, but the time or the, and it may be a financial, you know, the volunteers aren't, their stipend is very little, and that would mean that you had to be able to afford to run your household while you were also volunteering, and so that, those volunteer numbers are just down dramatically for probably a plethora of reasons. And it's meant that, in addition, Commissioner Holfberger mentioned the pay increases. Another big factor in the public safety side is just the pure numbers of people that we've had to employ additionally over the last seven or eight years. You know, we've had to hire dozens and dozens of firefighters and DMTs. You know, if you, you know, it's a, I'm very sorry, and I know, you know, even if it hasn't been said to a person on the Board, I know that all of the Board, you know, is considering a tax increase with a, you know, with a very heavy heart and a very heavy conscience. You know, I'm sorry that we're having to look at this, but what it comes down to, I don't think that there's an appetite or I wouldn't support increasing the millage rate and to get the money to stop the subsidy coming out of the general fund. It was either going to, it was either gonna be an Ad Valorem increase or an MSBU increase. You know, we, it's, as was also mentioned, it's paying for personnel. We can't, you know, we have the need for the personnel, we can't just decide we don't need the personnel anymore because we, you know, the numbers say that we do. So it's a, you know, it's a huge deal to increase taxes and, you know, as was articulated, it doesn't break out to a big number every month, but it's still something I know that each one of us, all five of us on the Board take very seriously. You know, there are other fees that, you know, have been mentioned from speakers on the podium, as well as my colleagues, where you've, you know, kinda indicated the costs of, you know, how much other things have gone up. In many of those instances, you have very little, you know, very little recourse, very little opportunity to air your grievances, you know. In this setting, at least, you know, everyone does have the opportunity to come and speak and, you know, and the Board does listen. Like I said, it's a, it's a very big deal to look at any type of tax increase. I know Commissioner May and I are, you know, very proud of, you know, been through a dozen budgets without ever increasing the millage rate and still, you know, and still maintaining and actually growing the amount of services that the county provides. I'm yet to, yet to receive a communication from a constituent that has indicated they would like less service or, you know, less, less of a response from the county when they, you know, when they have a need. You know, we end up being the stopgap for, you know, we've kind of stomached through some, you know, some emergencies, you know, some historic floods, as well as hurricanes, you know, in the past ten years. And the county's had to, you know, the county's been the primary person to, the primary entity to get out there and try to get boots on the ground to aid its citizenry. Again, it's a, I am genuinely sorry that this is what we're having to look at, but I do think it's what makes financial sense and prudence and, you know, the failure that you may feel that the Board has, you know, that the Board is taking on by looking at doing this, I think is probably better, you know, better articulated as a failure to not address it in, you know, ten or eleven years prior. One of the speakers indicated it's probably something we should've been going up on every year a little bit. You know, maybe that's the case, maybe that's what we should've done, rather than not having an increase for eleven years and now coming with, you know, with a larger increase. But it doesn't change, the fact of what we probably should've done over a number of budget years doesn't change where we are right now is where we are, and this, this increase is what will, is what will stop the subsidy coming out of the general fund. It's what will keep, you know, keep fire services and public safety healthy and, you know, it's, and then it's not paired with something that's looking at being increased next year or the year after that. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Berry. Commissioner May?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I think in all our budget hearings, that we've probably had more speakers at this first budget meeting than we've ever had. And so, you know, let me just say, my mind is not completely made up and Commissioner Holfberger, you adequately and eloquently explained exactly what funds could be, you and Commissioner Berry, so certainly appreciate it. And like you...
Please, folks, let Commissioner May speak.
There's the norm, there's protocol in which, you know, I think we've all been respectful and, you know, it doesn't move me that someone keeps out, the amount of times that I stand up and walk around, I mean, that doesn't move me. What moves me is doing what's right for our constituents. And so, obviously, when we live in the city, Commissioner Holfberger, we pay stormwater, a higher percentage of CRA dollars, we pay a higher millage rate, we pay a higher fire tax, just because we live in this city of Pensacola. And so I represent a large majority of people who pay a higher Ad Valorem tax than many, many other citizens. And so I do appreciate people's support and quite frankly, many of the people that came down to the podium are the very people who voted for the people in Washington and Tallahassee that has put this burden on our backs, that we're coming forth to take care of today. And so it's almost hypocritical for people to come and point fingers at their local elected when they voted for people that are putting the very burdens on their shoulders. So for me, I do empathize, and not because of any political pressure, someone said that they voted for me because that's insignificant to me. Every day I wake up to do the right thing, and that's why we win our race, you know, at a large number. But I get it. School board, increase taxes. Children's trusts. And property values are going up. We have an affordable housing program, and when we say, "Well, it's only a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifty dollars." Well, if you had a hundred dollars here, a hundred dollars there, a hundred dollars there, pretty soon, it's a three hundred dollars, it's a four hundred dollars, it's a five hundred dollars. And for a senior citizen who owns their home, or there's a single mom that, you know, just bought her trailer, or a single mom that's got affordable housing, when the property values go up, it's not that they can't afford the principal amount of their mortgage, it's that when you look into the particularly districts that I represent in the urban core, they may come in even with a subsidy to buy their home and have a controlled mortgage rate of a fixed amount in each year because of the appreciation of their property, and not saying that any of us want our property values to go down, but the property value goes up, so their taxes go up. so their taxes go up. We add a, a new tax, whether it's from the school board, whether it's children's trust, things that we can't control this, of this board and people find themselves strapped with decisions or rather not even going to pay my taxes on time or rather I'm going to pay my bills on time. And the next thing, you know, someone buys a tax certificate at 18%. And so now that property tax is not only what we said it was, $150, just went up to $210. And so for someone on a fixed income, that's a real hit. And so that's why I have real reservations about putting tax burdens and Steve, I'm, I'm a Democrat. And he said roll back the millage. I think Stephen and I have been the only ones to ever vote to roll back the millage. And I've said, I'm looking forward to some of my Republican friends to bring back, rolling back the millage because we got to do more with less. And so I, I, I stand on, on that principle that, you know, we're gonna have to not anticipate, but we have to recognize that there are going to be changes in, in, in property, in property taxes. We, you know, certainly have seen the direction in which our country and our state is going, that there are going to have to be cutbacks. And so we have to start planning for that without necessarily putting all of the burdens on the people. So, I mean, this is our first hearing. So, I mean, you know, I had made my mind up, but I do know that public safety is the number one priority of our board. I mean, all the good things that we do, the number one priority of an elected official is the public safety of its constituents, whether that be fire, whether that be law enforcement. That's what we're mandated today. I mean, that's what we take the oath to do, is to put public safety first. And how do we get there? I hope that we can get there in a way that's fair. So for me, I take, you know, I don't know how fair it is, you know, for someone on the beach to pay the same thing that someone pays on Gulf Beach Highway, someone pays in, in Montclair when we have a flat rate. I mean, to whom much is given, much is required. And so if I have a million dollar home and I'm paying $150 or I have an $80,000 home and I'm paying the same thing, I just don't know how fair that is for me and I don't know how I get there. I mean, because a, a family that, you know, has a family home that's only valued at $60,000, they're just trying to put food on the table, but someone who has a million dollars, they're eating out at Jackson's every night. And so, I mean, $150 is a lot of money, particularly to people who have to decide this month, are they going to pay their rent next month? Are they going to pay their power bill the next minute? Are they going to pay their water bill? And they're always robbing Peter to pay Powell. So, you know, when we add all these extra taxes and it ends up being $300 or $400, it is a significant hit. And so I don't know if the timing is right to put this burden on the back of, of, of the citizens, of, of the people. I mean, I know we have another budget hearing. I'd like to hear creativity, but I've certainly, quite frankly, you know, it was not a majority of the citizens that I represent that came down here because I represent a lot of the city of Pensacola. But I certainly hear what these citizens are saying and I share in that pain, as I've said earlier, just because if someone can't afford their taxes and they lose their property to a tax deed sale, I heard someone today said he buys property at tax deed sales. The tax deed sales is a, a end result of somebody of an estate or a family that can't afford to pay their property taxes, that someone benefits off of the bad will of someone that can afford to pay their taxes. And so if we're going to raise taxes, I mean, I just think that it, there has to be some other creative way. I think we have to meet people in the middle and figure out how do we continue to not cut services? How do we increase revenue but mitigate taxes on the backs of the people and become creative to make sure that everyone gets a win regardless of your financial position, regardless of your million dollar home or your $50, $50 home. I mean, we have to bring some type of parity to it. So, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you. That's kind of my position. And so that's where we are. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner May. I want to share some thoughts with y'all because I do listen to you. And I didn't grow up with, I struggle with this. I've been working with the comptroller. I started quarreling trash cans at 13 years old to get aluminum cans. I'm embarrassed to say this. I'd put dirt in them, crash them, take them to Alcoa to get, sell them. My first job was for a Chinese guy named Chi Yu and at 14, which I had to go in front of a judge. Most of my family lived in mobile trailers. I get it. My mom and dad are still on a fixed income with a very small retirement my dad gets. I know it's going to hurt some of you folks, but I need to explain my position and, and where I'm at. I get insurances up. I get FPLs going up. I get ES, you know, the gas is going up. I mean, everything's going up. And I feel the same pain when I go to the grocery stores as everyone else does. It's just, you're shocked every time you get the bill. I never intended on raising the millage tax, but when I got here, public safety and when I ran, there wasn't too many people that thought the, the firefighters were getting a decent wage. They just didn't. We haven't had a new firehouse in District 2 in 50 years. The people that live out on Paradise Beach may actually see their insurance go down and this could be a benefit. These are your fellow citizens. Commissioner Hofberger is right. We're talking $8 a month. If we would have done this back in 2013, it would have been about 75 cents a month to support firefighters. With that said, I support the MSBU, but not without a carrot. I understand you guys are in pain and I was working with the comptroller today to look at options that, not this cycle, but the next budget cycle on the TIF funds, potentially changing that number so that number could back. I'm going to, I'm going to ask this board to put the children's trust on the ballot. I see what it is. That would offset that. I don't know if I'll get two other votes, but I don't believe it's a fair tax. I understand that the school board, just the school board alone is more than, on my tax bill, is more than both the county and the non-ad valorem. Just, just the local one is $176. This will be about $160 between the non-ad valorem and 60 from the county on my bill. But it does add up and it hurts. And so this board, I don't know at this point, but I would like to look at our ratio of TIF funds. I would like the city next year to, hopefully we can work with them to have the same rate on the library fund and potentially change that. I'm looking at that. And like I said, the trust fund as well, and I hope the board puts it out there and if the people vote for it, you vote for it, but you'll have the choice. Now I want to share a little bit about what Commissioner, a lot of people want to get rid of property taxes and I think this is very important. I'm one of the representatives for the Florida Association of Counties that are looking into this. If you want to look at Art Millage, I said this the other day, you should go to the Florida Association of Counties and look at where Escambia County compares in the state on millage. We're one of the lowest in the state. We do have, we have a lot of low income people here in the state or in our county, I should say. But it puts together a lot of different, very informational things about what the difference is before property tax versus if they do a sales tax versus if they do carve outs for certain things. We don't know what's going to be on the ballot yet. The other thing I think is very important, like I said, I talked to Stefan in depth and the, and the property appraiser. I am being told by the, the people that are the experts in this that property values are going to be going down next year. Stefan, would you like to share with them what you shared with me so they understand some of the decision process that I'm going through? And I'm, I don't know if the other board members know this, but I think it'd be useful for you to share this with them.
Certainly, Commissioner. So many of the commenters tonight are correct, you know, that home values have gone up over the last few years. We are going through a cycle where those increases are going down. The property appraiser did come before the board and speak during our July workshops, that he is anticipating 2% increase in property values for next year. That is the information that we and the board have to operate with. So previously, again, we know we've had 7%. We've had, you know, roughly 10%. We've had, you know, 13%. Those, those types of growth in property valuation are slowing down. They are basically stabilizing, if you will. So at this point, you know, this is, this is where the board will ultimately have to make those decisions. And as far as ongoing budgeting purposes, you know, we will make future determinations regarding levels of service. If we're going to maintain level of service, if we're going to reduce levels of service. And those will be those, those future conversations that the board ultimately will have with staff and, and make those determinations to live within the revenues that the county receives.
Thank you, Stefan. So my commitment is one, Commissioner is, I'm for the MSBU, but I won't, I want you to know next year when we come up, I will have an offsetting, some sort of tax that will offset the MSBU because I think it's the right thing to do. And, but I do believe that we have to support the firefighters. And here's the thing, some people had said, and I wrote this down, and I do agree that if you have a $2 million house or a $100,000 house, you know, a non-ad valorem tax may seem unfair. And I can understand that, but being a nurse and a healthcare provider, firefighters don't just put out fires. Sometimes they're the first people there that actually save someone's life. I don't know if $8 a month for me is worth me or my wife's life. And I, I really think that we need to think about that. I mean, we have a very robust trained fire department and they're there a lot of times before our EMS gets there. And for me, I look at that, that service alone and that I believe is important to me as a, as a commissioner to represent the public and public safety. I just think it's very important. That's my driving, one of my driving factors in this. And I think that it's important to understand that. It's not just about, you know, taking care of fires. The majority of the fire calls are for basically EMT calls and EMS calls that actually are helping save and extend our fellow citizens' lives. It seems after 11 years, 75 cents a month to me is a fair assessment for that kind of service. I don't have any further comments. Commissioner May?
Yeah, Stefan, when does the local option sales tax go back on the ballot?
Commissioner, we're currently having those conversations. The state basically changed the law. So we, basically every two years, we're no longer allowed to do that, but we are contemplating 2026. If we do not put it on the ballot on 2026, it would be 2028. And that is actually, December of 2028 is when the current iteration of LOST expires.
And, and Mr. Chairman, you know, as we do these incremental increases, whichever way it goes, and I sincerely don't know which way anyone's going to go, but I mean, consistently small increases to citizens is going to, it's going to have an impact. I mean, and if we were to lose, if we were to lose local option sales tax, I mean, the infrastructure would crumble here. And as you said, you've just stated that you're going to put the children's trusts on there and we can't control what the school board has done. The school board has made increases. We're going to be looking to put the local option sales tax back on the ballot as well as giving this MSBU to the citizens. I mean, there are going to be some challenging days. And so as many of the speakers have said, how do we forecast? And most of us will probably be gone, you know, when it all happens. But for our children and for those who've come behind us, we certainly got to be very cognitive of what tax increases do, the adverse effect of what happens, you know, a little tax here, a little tax here. ECUA is going up. I mean, sewer deceptive conversions, many times they're just septic tanks in my district and many of your other districts, as they put that infrastructure in. The sewer bill is going to go up. FPL is, is going to go up. I mean, and, you know, we just have to be cognitive. And I, I think that there's no way to have this conversation without having an economic development conversation about how do we create jobs and wages and livable wages for our citizens. If we don't do that and then we're putting more burden on them, then I just don't think that that's good stewardship for me. And so I hope that, you know, as we come to the second hearing, we can have that overall conversation because if we're not increasing the wages, we're increasing the fee. It doesn't matter to me whether it's an ECUA, a sewer fee or, or a city fee. I mean, it's real money to real people. And when we live, particularly when you represent pockets of poverty that I represent, I know that people have to decide rather than not, they're going to, you know, let their child be in the band or, or rather not, you know, they're just going to, you know, make sandwiches this weekend instead of, you know, going out to eat. So a couple hundred dollars, frankly, ends up being $1,000. And when you only make $15,000, $16,000, $17,000 a year, $1,000 is a real impact. And so we all, we will all vote our conscience, but I hope that we can, you know, now have this dialogue. We have a new board. Commissioner Barry and I have been there, but I mean, to me, we have to have the overall conversation before we make this final vote on doing a increase because this is not the only increase and we shouldn't mislead people. I mean, the local option sales tax really comes in 2026 or 2028. It's probably one of the most significant tax that we have. So if we don't have roads and we don't have stormwater control, we don't have sidewalks, there's no way that we are going to get the EMS trucks or the fire trucks to put out the fire in those neighborhoods if we don't have the streetlights, if we don't have the roads, if we don't have the bridges. All of that stuff plays a part to me in public safety. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I look forward to further discussion.
Commissioner May, if I just, something came to my mind, some of the things that, that you just mentioned and, and a lot of people, I, I heard tonight, they want to get rid of the, the property tax. And I, and there were some things said tonight I actually definitely agree with. I do think people on fixed income, seniors, all those, there should be some sort of relief for them. I'm, I'm open to impact fees. I have, the board hasn't taken that on. I think we should reconsider that in the future. But I do think this, think about if, if they, because they're not, they're going to move this money somewhere. It's a transfer. Imagine if it goes to 10%, how much are you going to pay when you buy a car? I mean, sales tax, the people that come from Alabama to come here, they may stay in Alabama because we have a pretty low sales tax over here. So all those things are going to be hashed out. We don't know what's going to be put on the ballot next year, but I think there will be something put on the ballot. And I just challenge everyone, if, if we lose so much home rule and as Commissioner May said, we don't get a local option sales tax, it is going to be painful in this county. I mean, we are going to have to make some seriously tough decisions. And services would have to be cut. Pay raises probably wouldn't happen for county employees. I don't take this job lightly. I think you could probably tell by my, my tone of my voice and how I've calculated this for since a while now. But these, these are, and I, I believe my colleagues are in the same boat. I don't think anyone's up here wanting, wanting to take it to any citizen, especially for fire safety.
And Mike, I mean, listen, and I, and I don't mind taking the abuse. I mean, I've taken much more than that, but, you know, to be fair, I mean, some people voted and where we got tariffs. I mean, it's real money. I mean, if you think that this has a direct impact, let me just tell you what tariffs are doing to people, everyday people. And those are real things. So the very people that voted, for the people that are imposing tariffs would beat us up, you know, for a fire safety. I mean, so there's a, I mean, there's a lot going on. There's a lot of moving pieces. And it's just not one solution. And if it was easy, I guess everybody would do it. But quite frankly, you know, tariffs have caused, when you talk about groceries, you're talking about goods, you're talking about automobiles, you're talking about the clothes and the shoes that you wear. Look at the percentages of what tariffs have done to the cost of living in America. It's a direct impact.
All right, Board, I don't have any, unless there's any further discussion. All right, then I'm going to ask for, to entertain a motion to adopt the fiscal year 25, 26 non-ad valorem special assessment rule as presented in the agenda backup.
Senator.
Is there a second? Commissioner Stroberger, second. There's a motion, a second. Please vote. There's four in favor. Any opposed? Are you four? Commissioner opposed? Four? Okay, five oh. Motion passes 5-0. All right, Board, we're now at number five, the board adoption of the BCC employee pay scale. The chair, oh, we have two speakers on this one. Melissa Pino, you're up first.
Thank you, Melissa Pino, 413 Southeast Boblets. So you guys just saw all of that pain in the audience. It was really, really real. And I feel so sorry for so many of these people because they don't understand it's just going to get worse. It's going to get worse on every level. Who knows whether DeSantis is going to bring it for property rights? It's all just a property tax. It's just a game to him. It's a game to so many people. I think that what you guys maybe sometimes don't realize is that a lot of your staff is feeling that amount of pain. They've got all of that going on and they got to come to work every day and they can't show it. The only people that can show their anger, their frustration and that they're really, really hurting are the unions. And then the unions get war brought to their door. We've got people that are after ECAD again. And quite frankly, the reason that it took so long on the fire MSBU is because the union got a little outside of itself with Doug and it turned into a big war. And that's really unfortunate. And there were times that Kevin and I'd show up at budget meetings, we'd be here two years early, two hours early with a big book in the back and Commissioners May and Barry can attest that we used to spend hours preparing. So I am ashamed to say, I don't even know what, I'm hoping this is a pay increase and I'm hoping it's substantial, but what I'm... But what I'm asking the commission and senior administration to understand is that people don't care if you remember that when you were young, you were poor. That doesn't mean that it means nothing, Chairman Kohler, so I'm not knocking it and I'm not being snide. No one cares, Commissioner Hofberger, that you grew up on Detroit. What they care about is that you remember what it was like. And, and Commissioner Stroberger, the same for you. I mean, it doesn't matter that you and your wife moved here to be economical when people can't eat. When, when, when the woman said, do we have to take four jobs? People get paid crap in this county, some of them, and it's been going on for way too long. Not a lot of people get paid great, except once you really start graduating into the big time. Please, all of you, start realizing that your staff is under pressures, that they're never, ever gonna let you see, and they can't tell you. And start thinking about them with the empathy and the care, and start taking care of them the way that you think about your constituents and you can, your concern for the people at the podium, 'cause your staff can't, can't come up here and advocate for themselves.
Thank you, Mel. I, I can just tell you for me, I don't know anyone else, but I take this stuff serious. And I don't, I mean, I really do. Mr. Wade, you're up.
Kevin Wade, 413 Southeast Boblets. Yes, sir, I know that you do take this seriously. You showed that last night, showing up at a neighborhood watch meeting. And quite often, it's, I used to call it neighborhood watch bleatings, but now you're showing up, and it almost looked like a neighborhood watch beating. And you handled it very well. The amount of time that you've taken to be boned up on so many of the issues, very impressive. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin.
The, pardon me, the staff, they, they do need raises, and there's some staff that I know that fear for their jobs over small, petty, crazy little things. They shouldn't need to fear for their jobs. But price of everything's coming up. Absolutely, the price of everything is coming up. I'm, I'm hoping this works out well for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. We have one last speaker, Josh Roberson. Is Josh still here? Okay, Josh, you signed up, correct? Okay, come on up. That's our last speaker on this topic, folks.
I'm back. Hey, Mr. Wade, right. I'm sorry, Joshua Roberson. Mr. Wade, right, there are county staff members that are scared to say anything or fear for retaliation or retribution or vindictiveness. But, ah, can't speak up or say anything. It's not the county's job to employ everybody in this county. It's not the county's job, when you look at raises, to give the, the floor sweeper $20 an hour. It's just not. It's not, it's not our job. You know, for the record, I'd like to just put this on record. I, I can't, I can't sit back in the back, you know? For me, I'm gonna stand up here, 'cause I got 2:15, but I will say that I agree that county employees should be paid decent, so they don't have to go out and get second jobs, kinda like our firefighters with their $13 an hour raise that I was told was wrong. I was told, well, by the, by the year, their annual salary, by the hour, employees don't make an annual salary. We all know that. Don't mix words. Just like LOST funds do not go for existing roads. They go for new projects. Just like taking the same millage rate you had last year is voting for a raise in taxes by state statute. So, you can't sit on the board and say you didn't raise taxes. I just wanna make sure that we're not misspeaking here to the public, and that we're not gaslighting people out here to say that we're crazy and you guys are great. Again, keep thinking it's our money. It's okay to pay the county employees the right amount of money. No one should have to work two jobs when they're out here and they're taking the criticism from the public. They're the ones that you shove us off to. We don't have the information in front of us about the budget. You've already spoken to Mr. Stefan. We don't, most of us that were here don't know we have to call and say, hey, open the cell on the spreadsheet. It's 2025. Where's the open transparency? If we don't know that that, that budget opens up even further along the line to look even deeper, and then we get shown a spreadsheet, where is the accountability? I'm just asking questions. I, I know you probably won't answer, because you don't wanna go back and forth and have a conversation, but that's where we're at. Now, we'll get to see it, but, uh, see something. But we all don't have the pleasure to show up before the meeting and jockey for the money for our positions like the ones I ran into when I was pulling in. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, board, that's all the speakers on that item. So, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2025, 26 employee pay scale as presented in the agenda backup.
Move the item, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Board, that's a, that's adjourned this meeting.